Let's get this meeting underway, um, Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I'm feeling a little bit better from the COVID disease.
Good. I'm tired.
Okay, uh, what are we gonna start? Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Loughlin?
Here.
Councilperson Sexton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Goodweiler?
Here.
Stulman?
Here.
All right, um, our first item of the agenda is to, uh, so mayor proclamation of, uh, it's called the Fair Housing Proclamation Month. This is presented to us from the Iowa City Board of Realtors. So I'm gonna read a proclamation and that will be our proclamation. Whereas, April 11th marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, fam- familial status, disability, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Iowa City Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with their other organizations to help assure every one of the right to fair housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now therefore, I Roger Loughlin, Mayor of the West Branch, the city of West Branch, do hereby resolve that April 2021 being Fair Housing Month begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in the city of West Branch and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year. Proclamation of Fair Housing Act. Okay, sign that into the record. Um, next up would be public comment. Anyone wishing to comment to the council?
I have some comments.
Jesse?
Hey there, can you guys see me?
Yes.
And hear me okay? Great. I just wanted to hop on today and share a quick update about our successful Suites for Success fundraiser last Friday. Uh, I am very happy to share that we raised a net total of $21,838, which is over twice as much as we raised last year. Um, we had a great turnout. All the tables were reserved, even though we moved to the bigger venue with twice as much capacity this year. We were able to keep all the tables six feet apart and didn't have any problem asking people to wear masks when they were up from their tables. Um, everybody was having a good time and we are very happy with surpassing our fundraising goal. So wanted to hop on and celebrate that community's success.
All right, thank you. You guys worked hard on that, I know, and, uh, that's great to hear of that success.
Nice job.
Nice job, yeah.
Thanks all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which pertains to adopting the city minutes for the city council of April 5th, approving a Class C liquor license, a Class B wine, class, or Class E liquor license, Class B wine, Class C beer with carryout, and Sunday sales for, it's gonna be called BPGLLC, Jack and Jill. That must be the new owner. Located at 115 East Main Street. Also a motion to approve a cigarette permit for the Jack and Jill store, same, because of an owner change. Most to appoint a member to the, and establish an animal control appeal board and the claims report. Give me a motion someone. Colton? Uh, Nick, a second. I'm gonna explain this control, animal control appeal board. We had a dog bite someone in town, I don't know, a month ago. So, the police chief has deemed that animal a dangerous animal. So, the owner of that animal is appealing. Thus, this, this animal control appeal board, which is one vet, one person sitting on the Animal Control Commission, and one councilperson. So I've asked Nick if he would volunteer to sit on this hearing. Still in? Good boy. That's what this is all about. Hopefully we'll have a meeting on that in some evening in May, first week of May. Anything else on this consent agenda? Okay, Leslie, go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Item one is, uh, stack referendum landed, equipment replacement set aside schedule for the police department. This is a motion to accept. Guess I need a motion first. Jerry will motion.
I'll say him.
Thanks, Jody. So, uh, police chief has come up with a schedule of purchases through the next, I don't know, eight years or so? Go ahead, Cory.
This is, uh, just continuing what, uh, the council has requested us to kind of set that money aside. So this is you giving your blessing. This is how we want to, uh, set those monies aside for future purchases.
Um, I don't see a vehicle though.
The vehicle's separate, separate replacement, yeah.
I'm assuming this is all in, in your budget every year?
Yes.
I have a question. So with the new radio stuff that's happening with Cedar County, how is that going to affect us? Is it going to require us to buy new radios? Is that something that we've taken into?
Yep, so I can touch on that. So if you look at fiscal year '25 replacement and that, it has us purchasing those radios, that will not happen. So those balances will be adjusted. Uh, we left it in there, uh, just to ensure that those radios, that deal happened.
So my understanding with the new radio system, which the county has all approved now, we've approved it. Radios are part of the deal. Fire departments and police will get new radios?
So?
If needed?
Yeah, at the beginning, in its inception, uh, all the agencies were asked to submit their request for the number of radios that they were gonna need. And so they're basically on a one-for-one. So we turn in one of our old radios and they provide us one of the new ones. So.
Cedar County stepping up!
It's something like 400 radios, I think, for the county. Fire departments.
Million dollars.
Badly needed.
Yeah.
This, it's, it's great.
That's awesome.
Okay Cory, um.
I'll stay, keep standing up here during the next one.
Looks like a good plan. Yeah, you're.
You have a question?
Um. I do a vote? We got a motion to accept and a, all right, we'll do a vote then, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton? Stulman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, we'll talk about cats for a minute. Resolution 1997, continuing to allow the implementation of a trap, neuter, and release feral cats pilot program within the city. Give me a motion someone. Jerry? Jody will second. So we approved this last year, I believe. I have no idea what the outcome is, or was, or. Cory would like to speak on the subject?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is the benefit to our ecosystem, to our community, to have feral cats running around?
Eat mice. That's what Al Byer told me. That keeps keeps rodents down.
Under control.
I guess that's a positive.
Jordan?
There's a heck of a population damage, uh, very substantial damage to the bird population by feral cats. I don't have the numbers, but the national, uh, National Audible Society said it was in the billions of birds being destroyed by feral cats throughout the United States. Something people don't think about, but I guess I'm a bird watcher and I'd rather have birds than cats.
Owls and, uh, fox too, just did a good job of that too.
I mean, I'm,
Oh yeah.
If they're here, you know, trapping them and making sure they don't reproduce, I guess that's a great idea, but if you've got them, why reintroduce them back to the?
What else are you gonna do with them? Put them down? That would be unpopular.
Well, I'm sure it would be.
Relocate?
Take them to Regina.
I guess the other question would be, is what are they hurt?
Well, I know, I know out there where, where I'm at, if, if you crawl up on one of them houses and they smell like cat urine and, and, and all that other stuff and they get in there and they tear the insulation up at the bottom of the house and they get up in there, I mean, that's, they walk on your cars and leave cat prints all over your cars. I mean.
Do we have any idea how many, how many colonies we have? I don't know how you would determine that, honestly.
I haven't even seen a wildcat around.
Open your eyes, brother!
I got my neighbor, my neighbor's cats are running around.
Don't walk in the streets when Roger's driving down the road.
Certain neighborhoods would probably be able to identify cats that are always around. The issue that we have is residents let their cats run. You don't know if they're. So you don't know,
Yeah.
without attempting to catch it, whether it's truly feral or it's, uh, somebody's domesticated pet that they just let out, so. I'm assuming they're not easy to catch. So if you. No, you'd have to trap it, I mean. Oh yeah. You see one in the, on duty, you're probably, probably not gonna stop and try to catch the thing. You're just gonna say, all right, we need to trap over in this area and see if we can catch the thing. So as you might be surprised, we have limited resources in our animal control abilities, so, uh, and a lot of the communities that this, these TNR programs are successful with have full-time animal control. That is what they do. They can monitor it, they can, they have the facilities for it and doesn't tie up a police officer to transport, trap, relocate, so. That's kind of the basis of my opposition to the program was, it's just, I'm not opposed to the program, it's just I, I would hope that there would be other avenues people could pursue either through grant funding or volunteer efforts. Did I read we're only, we're only doing like nine or 10 cats a year or something like that? Yeah. I mean, that's probably not even a, they probably don't even put a small dent in the problem.
So where's the Animal Control Commission stand on this? They support this?
Well, if you fix nine cats a year that ain't out there reproducing, that, that, I mean, that could make a difference.
From what I've read, they produce, what, four times a year? One, one male can produce, or one female can produce four times a year, is that right? Five or six kittens? Twenty kittens? However many. I mean, it only takes, only takes one male that runs around and he taking care of the whole neighborhood. Next thing you know, you have a
That's what I'm saying.
Population.
Nine cats doesn't sound like a lot, but, I mean, it's one of those things where if you, if they're here, you gotta do something. But it just doesn't make sense to me if you catch a wild cat that you turn it back loose and.
I guess my other question would be, what, what are our other options?
Right.
Who would do the actual trapping? Would it be the police force?
Typically, the cats would be caught. So somebody would complain, like last year, how it worked with, somebody would have a cat, they'd complain, uh, we'd either provide them a live trap and then it'd be either accepted or not accepted by Dr. Byer on whether it was a TNR in our cat. So.
But Cory, that happens regardless, right? I mean, even if they didn't do the
Yeah, if we stray and we catch it, it goes the animal clinic.
I believe before they, they kept it for a while, if it was adoptable and, and then if it was optional relocating, sometimes farmers would like to have them out there. So, so they weren't taken at that time, but if they couldn't find a home, then it was euthanized. I don't know how many actually made it to euthanization stage before, but I don't believe there was a lot.
Well, this particular program is release, neuter and release.
Back into town, yeah. I, I think one of the, the challenges I may have are, obviously, um, Chief makes some good points, but we were really asking the Animal Control Advisory Board to give us some standards of what is a successful program. Really had a hard time trying to figure out what, what means success? What, what would we be looking towards if we know what gets working or if it's not working, what? So they were really kind of an open-ended thing and since, uh, our code says, catch animals and not release them out there, it's kind of a tough point that, uh, you know, the city has a real exemption to, to release animals where everyone else is supposed to, you know, not release them. So, we figure if we're going to do that, we should have something somewhat concrete that we can lay our hand on and say that it's working.
Yeah, when I read through the minutes, it, it really was kind of indecisive on whether it worked or not.
Right.
The last year.
And, and maybe they can.
It's hard to make.
They haven't as of yet, and so that's why we were kind of thinking, at, at least maybe table it, let them work once more. Then when they have something that they can say, this, this is what we're going to do, just tell us to continue it. And if we know that, then we'll have to, you know, go back and, and change the code. And if they find out that they didn't meet those goals and say, yeah, we tried it and it didn't work, so we'll just keep on looking for something else to try and address the issue.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Colton, why should we release them back into town? If we're gonna release them, what's to release them, as you say, to a farmer or somebody that can benefit from the cats and not bring them back to town?
King covers kill mice. We don't go get a bunch of them and bring them there.
I mean, I mean, it could be.
I mean, if that's the only benefit, is they kill mice.
Well, it seems to me that if you trap it once, and that same cat goes out, you're releasing it, same cat comes back and you trap him again, that means our police department is also.
You'll, you'll be hard pressed to get one of them twice.
Put the right bait in there a little.
They're dumb, but they ain't that dumb.
I don't know how I feel on this subject. They really don't. Cory, you can eat some out of your house, don't you? No, I'm good. Okay, so right now we have a motion to approve and, uh, to approve.
Suspending.
As it's continued.
We would continue the program.
Continue the program.
It's been in effect for a year. We, but it's really been hard to. Yeah, we did this last year too, or two years ago.
You did last, last year.
Last paragraph, without any meaningful performance, Major, I support the police department's stance that we suspend this program.
What's written in what it says?
Well, I'm, I'd be inclined to support the police department on this. Until the Animal Control Commission can maybe come up with a better solution.
Well, there you go. That's, that's, that's just it. If, if we don't do this, what are we gonna do? You gotta do something.
Well, if we, it says a maximum of 11 cats, if we catch 11 cats and fix them, we catch the rest of them and then we euthanize them.
Or, or rehome them.
Yeah.
Oh, you're, you're, you're gonna hear all about that.
I feel sorry for your email.
I'm not listed in the phone book.
Anybody have any suggestion? We're gonna pass this or we don't pass it?
I think we have trap and release programs, or regardless if we think it's a problem, the population in town is not at problematic levels compared to when you do a TNR program. Like, you're talking cities like, most TNR programs are in cities of like 100,000 plus. I mean, you're talking cats in the thousands. We might have a couple dozen.
Heard of coyotes in Chicago.
So.
A couple dozen cats you think we got? We probably got a couple.
A hundred or more.
Few dozen.
Only problem is there's cats all over my neighborhood, most of them are owned. So what you count as a feral cat compared to somebody's pet cat?
I don't know how you tell.
You get them in a, you get them, no.
No, no.
You get them in a trap and you'll know which ones are which.
Yeah.
They clip their ears.
So we know, we know the second time.
Yeah, the first time you'd hope there was a collar. Yeah. But the problem we run into is the quote-unquote feral cats aren't always necessarily crazy in them either, because a lot of feral cats in town are fed by community members and they're really not all that feral.
Might be, correct.
I know that for a fact, because, I mean, I know my mom doesn't live here anymore, but pretty sure she maintained the community on Wolfen Street for a good decade. Along with some of other neighborhoods, but. It's kind of big, the question is where you draw the, draw the line between nuisance and they're here.
Well, I feel like kicking this back to the Animal Control Commission.
I'm just trying to gauge the damage that's done by having them be here. Like, what is the nuisance level that we need to handle them that much? Like, I agree, I don't think we need to be trapping them and continuing the program, but the question is, where do we go next? I'd like to know what is the real damage they're causing before we start trapping and euthanizing and trapping and.
Property damage or.
Why don't we table this and have Al Byer come?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Just real quick, I wanna, um, mention, I think the reason this whole started, whole thing started was there were some cats over on the west side of town.
West side?
Yes, and they, and that's where the complaints originally came from. And it was somebody who was feeding a bunch of feral cats and we were getting complaints of these cats being on people's decks and, you know, tearing into their plants and walking on their pools and getting into their swimming pools and doing all sorts of things. And that's how this whole thing started, but the, the catching of the cats seems to be on, on the east side of town. So, I'm not quite sure how it all correlates, but that's what it was. So we were getting complaints from residents of cats being a problem.
We've had some complaints.
Yeah.
We need a bunch of cameras in town so we know where these cats are, where they're migrating and. He's, I was gonna say, the only problem is, is people who own cats and it's their pet cat. Had to see my neighbor's cat digging in my garden before.
We ask, I mean.
That's an owned animal that somebody had.
Yeah.
And then I thought to release them like that was people thinking.
Well, it's just an outside cat.
Yeah.
Could we ask a citizen to trap a feral cat and take it in themselves? If, if they so please, I mean, could we give away a?
They don't like that because then the, the vet clinic could become inundated with cats and they don't want them either.
The neighbor's cat gets stuck in the trap too. The tame cat. That's the other thing, too, is.
Which could happen anytime.
Yeah, if you have an outbred cat.
Who brought this? Who, who's, whose motion is it? Jerry?
I had an 11 cat in November one year out there. And the vet clinic was starting to get pretty upset.
I was a little confused, um, down in the minutes of the meeting. Is the clinic not, um, do we have a contract with the clinic?
Yeah, that, that's all been resolved. They, there was a miscommunication.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna go. We just said, we needed, the police department needed to change that procedure.
Okay.
All right. Did I, did I read on down that Cedar County's gonna put a shelter up in Cedar?
Cedar County hasn't officially accepted taking that shelter over. They, the shelter people have asked Cedar County to take control of the shelter. They're himming and hawing about it right now. So I don't know where that's at. Okay. Any suggestions? We, we either vote it, vote yes or vote no, or we table it?
I'd like to see what Al Byer has to say.
Why don't you renege your reads?
Ready to vote on it myself.
Okay, if it votes no, I don't know how it's gonna go.
Vote no means this continues, vote yes means it will continue on. Table means to even have Dr. Byer go or.
It's your motion, so, well, you, you have control.
I guess I'd like to see it come to a vote.
Okay.
From there.
Is there any other discussion and then we'll vote. If not, then let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
No.
Miller? I'm sorry, Stulman?
No.
Miller?
No.
Dean?
No.
Goodweiler?
No.
Okay, motion fails. We will not do a trap, neuter, and release until it's brought up another way somehow by someone else?
They, they can do their research and come back to us and say, we have the research to prove it and then we'll get it again.
Okay, let's move on. Um, item three, resolution 1998, approving $6,521.55 to the Lynn County REC for the relocation of electric utilities related to the Greenview connection. Motion someone. Um, Jerry? You're second, Colton.
Second.
Colton will second. This seems like a great deal.
I'm, I'm just surprised that we waited this long for this little bit. I thought we were in the $20,000, $30,000.
That was a wild gap. I don't know. Yeah, me too.
Didn't realize. It's gonna be done last.
Apparently, Alliant Energy will do the gas lines for no charge, which is good. Very nice. Any other discussion? Pardon?
What'd you say?
There's gas lines also. This is just the power line. They're gonna relocate a transformer, put it closer to my house. Does Alliant have any power lines out there? No.
See if they have utilities that are underground.
Yeah, they own the gas lines, REC owns the power lines.
No, Alliant's doing theirs for free, but REC's not.
That was gonna be my question.
Wow. Never would've seen that coming.
So what's, this is a good deal though, this is a pretty cheap.
I'm just curious, why one's charging us and one's not? We must've got it resolved whether this was an easement or right of way.
It's probably a easement.
Whichever one costs us money.
It's an easement.
Weird, because an Alliant's not doing it.
So this.
That's why I'm confused.
I know.
I mean, I'll pay the 6,800 bucks, 'cause it's not a lot, but.
I didn't know it was, uh.
Yeah, Kevin's on. I think Kevin figured out it's an ease it's an easement and not a right of way, and so did Mr. Secunder.
Right. So even it it could be questionable, but by the time we argue the dang gone thing out.
We're talking another year.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't gonna be.
That's fine.
Let's vote. Let's uh, let's get this done and get it going.
So if there's one electrical line has to be lowered, it says locate and lower existing in the electric line?
It includes a transformer relocating a transformer.
Yeah.
And the line heads south and then it tees off and heads west. All that has to be lowered.
Is that part of that's not a line. That's REC. Okay. That's all I'm wondering.
You do an auction box here.
And they'll relocate the uh, the light, the street light puts out there too.
Awesome.
Okay, any other comment? Let's vote, Leslie, please.
I'm Kristen Sexton.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
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 And it's Stulman?
Yes.
Good Tyler?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, let's talk about a roundabout or no roundabout here. So um, the cost is going up of this roundabout. We had a meeting, Jerry and Tom, and Johnson County engineers, a Johnson County supervisor, I believe she was. And Dave Secunder to discuss why it's going up. It's it's just the profile of the road. I'm gonna shut up and let Dave take over. He can explain it pretty well. Dave?
Yes.
Go ahead and uh explain why the cost has increased so much, please.
In talking with Johnson County, they went through a number of iterations. The preliminary design didn't factor in the amount of grading that was necessary in order to be able to get the roundabout approaches to work with lowering the roundabout when they tried to fit it in and work with the surrounding properties, particularly the one on the southwest corner of the intersection. That driveway got pretty steep pretty quickly, so they had to push the roundabout further north and do quite a bit of work on that property in order to get it low enough that they could have it flat for long enough that it met their requirements. The cost went up pretty significantly because it also required more pavement to be redone on the east side. Quite a bit of fill on the east side of the intersection, which took our grades up a fair amount. And then once we got that part of it established and got the crosswalk that's shown on the east side for the pedestrians, that has to be meet ADA, which is a cross slope of one and a half percent. That that just creates a number of issues so that it really pushed that east side quite a bit further, almost down to the sign on the high school. Did the same thing going north. So we added quite a bit of pavement, a significant amount of work for grading, and then there's property acquisition, fencing, and quite a bit of work that was required on that southwest corner on that property. They put up a privacy fence, the driveways, some landscaping and whatnot. So by the time they got all that adjusted, they had added another hundred and fifty thousand just on the east side of Johnson Cedar Center Line, which would be city responsibility according to the agreement that was drafted. They also had some discussion that the county was not favorable to allowing the city to pay back over two to three years. A lot of that stems from concerns due to the potential for annexation going west, seeing that Meadows is starting to build out and logical expansion would likely be to the west. So Johnson County wasn't real keen on paying for much more and having that potential happen. So that's generally what we discussed with the Board of Supervisors and the county engineer. One of the things that we had talked about was that we would still like to have this intersection pushed north and flattened, even if we abandoned the roundabout. And how does that impact the other options that we looked at with the turn lanes? Before, they were about the same cost as the roundabout. Are we going to see those same costs creep back into that cost estimate? So they were going to go back and take a look at that a little closer. There was a no cost option to the city, which was basically leave Herbert Hoover Highway coming in as it does now and just repave up to the intersection and stop and match existing grade. That doesn't really take care of the issues that we had identified in the previous traffic study. In addition, we've had some new warrants that have come into play, and the left turn lanes are much easier to justify with lower traffic volumes. So we've asked the MPO that did the study to go back and take a look at the current warrants and see if we were still close to that threshold for left turn lanes or if we were past that and they were now recommended. So we should hear back on that shortly, but this option that we see up on the screen now does not have the turn lanes. That's the realigned, flattened, simple intersection, which would be the least cost option addressing some of the issues. But in order to meet the current warrants, as we see them, we're likely going to have to put the left turn lane going eastbound on Herbert Hoover to northbound on Cedar Johnson Road. So that's what we're faced with is to try to provide direction to the county so that they can try to get this designed and out to bid. They already have their current project out to bid, and that is Herbert Hoover. You can see that west of that southwest property, there's a grass peninsula that sticks down with a tree in it. We're about two hundred feet west of there is where they're currently stopping with that road project. And they do that so that as we go through this intersection design, it'll all be one project that they can let at a little later date and not influence their federal funding for the west portion of this.
Dave, eastbound, you said eastbound turn lane, so eastbound turning north onto Johnson Cedar. So that'll be on the Johnson County side of the line, correct?
That's correct, but we also need on the east side for the pavement section to take to transition back to two lanes. So there's going to be some widening that's required on the east side of the intersection also so that the lanes will.
But that's because they have to put a turn lane in on the other side.
That's correct.
Why in this scenario on the screen does the intersection get pushed so far north currently?
I'm trying to get that intersection to come in perpendicular to the north-south road so that as we improve this with the turn lane in the future, that everything lines up, the sightlines are correct, and the traffic. As you look into town, coming over the hill, it's lined up so that somebody coming through, if there are cars that are stopping due to school traffic, they've got good sight distance. So we're trying to get that line straight and then also take the intersection vertically, lower that about four or five feet in that area.
Are they also lowering cutting down the hill in front of that property also?
Yes, so when they push it north, it it does get lower and that gives them room to grade back.
Is this the cheapest version in your mind, Dave?
This would be the cheapest version that we show, but if the new warrants that are used for determining whether a left turn lane should be installed or not are taken into consideration, this might not be the recommended alternative anymore. So the.
That still shouldn't cost us any more money. If they have to put a turn lane in on their side because it's warranted, we don't pay for what happens in Johnson County here.
Anything west of the intersection would be on them, but as I mentioned, there would be a transition to go back on the east side. So Redmond, do you have that in the council packet for the turn lane option?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know where exactly it is.
The cost, you mean?
Yeah.
On page forty-five.
It's still pretty expensive. That's why we went with the roundabout because the turning lanes were only about fifteen thousand dollars difference.
Well, forty-five in mine.
I don't see a cost.
That's up for it.
We got, we, I mean, we would get some of Cedar Johnson paved. We would get some of Main Street paved. Was that exhibit five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the concept that has left turn lane going north on Johnson Cedar Road. It also has a left turn lane as you're coming west on Main Street going south. There isn't much traffic anticipated there and that could likely be shortened up. But it also lines up the through lane on the north side and the through lane on the south side.
Yeah, estimated cost was three hundred, two hundred and ninety-three. I think those are old numbers. They are old numbers, but that's the only number we have because they went to the roundabout and they don't have any additional cost to this.
Well, and those could just be the make believe numbers like they made up with the roundabout.
Seven hundred and ten.
Yeah, well, that's a that's total.
And Colton, that's what we've asked them to go back and look at is seeing the extra cost that worked its way into the roundabout project. Is that same thing going to happen with this option five?
Well, in our conversation with the the one supervisor, I said the council would probably still approve anything that was three hundred thousand dollars or less to West Branch. Even though we don't know how we would pay for it yet, I also told her we really need the county to help us out and finance it for three years.
Yeah. We talked about since they have concern that since they have concern that after they made this investment, they think that the city would come back and annex it and they would lose on their return on investment on the investment of this infrastructure. So we offered up, well, we can set some timelines on not allowing annexation for a period of time whenever you think that rate of return could be calculated and or identify what a payment might be. So if a developer does come up, that'd be something that we can like pass along and get the annexation sooner. So they're not like left left out of.
The twenty-eight agreement that we have is shows ten percent per year. A ten-year agreement, it would not be annexed for ten years. Or we give up ten percent, say in seven years.
Have we moved on?
They keep seventy percent.
The same thing. But yeah.
They they're upset. They would be upset if if they did all this work and paid for it on Johnson County. And then we annexed the farm field to the west.
So and then we would get all that for they would pay for it, we would annex it. So her discussion to us was.
I don't I don't suppose the fact that thirty-nine houses in the West Branch or in Johnson County have anything to do with it.
I didn't quite understand her under her.
Do you, we talked about that. Do you think she didn't know?
Thirty-nine homes that are already there?
That property tax plan up at Johnson County.
Say you still pay Johnson County taxes.
She used the words and dropped in the bucket, so I think she knew.
But you have to remember that if it gets annexed into the into the city, the city gets a portion of that tax base.
Yeah.
Whereas right now, the county gets a big bigger portion and the and the school gets the other portion.
But it's just ag land. It ain't worked nothing anyway.
It's a farmer who's paying taxes on it.
Yeah, yeah.
My point was if it gets annexed, that's money to the county. If it gets annexed, I would think they'd want it annexed right away.
Absolutely.
Because that's not right.
It was completely opposite of that.
Again, we pay taxes, they could pay taxes on the ag land, but you'd think if it got turned into residential, it's gonna be four hundred thousand dollar house. And we annexed it, chunk that they get on that is still more than they're gonna get out of that anyways.
But the the actual development part might be ten yards down the road and they'd lose out on the impartial partial of the taxation.
I would be willing to agree to no annexation for a period of time because it's not gonna happen anyway.
Yeah, and I'd like to throw this out because in in the conversation, I kind of got it just from the supervisor that she might be willing to do something on this annexation.
Yeah.
Agreement.
If I could agree to the annexation.
So I got to thinking, um, because they brought up the agreement that came with Cedar County or Johnson County and the city of West Branch in nineteen forty-one. In nineteen forty-one, there was two houses on that road and it was a gravel road. All this time, it's like, why would anybody in the city ever do that? It's a gravel road. There was no maintenance on that gravel.
I have more to say about that.
So now it looks like we should look back on this agreement and then and and adjust that. I think the supervisor, she kind of like, oh, that was clear back in forty-one. Maybe we should re.
It says it says maintenance. Maintenance is plowing it, fixing potholes. It's not complete reconstruction of the road.
So Johnson County's road.
Yeah.
So they it's still Johnson County's road.
Or half of it is.
We agreed to maintain it.
Is half of it their road or is all of it?
Yes.
Half of it belongs to us, half of it belongs to them.
Right.
So that was what I was getting at. As far as them having to adjust ours because they have to put a turn lane here, why should we have to pay for that? It's because they have to put a turn lane in. They have to bring it back to where it fits into our road.
We have to put a turn lane in too. If they put one in, we got.
Okay.
On our side.
Okay, but that that's still different than paying for the whole thing. And as far as Cedar Johnson Road goes, they're paving that much, but half of that's theirs. We shouldn't have to pay for that either.
So also in the conversation, it was brought up that this intersection doesn't have to be done next year. It could be done in the next five years. So my thought was, why don't we look into doing Cedar Johnson Road, expedite that, put this in with Cedar Johnson Road and try to get the county to do a twenty-eight agreement on Cedar Johnson Road. And then we throw this all in as one one big project instead of doing this in two projects.
I don't know about that. Right now, this is.
That just sounds like kicking the cane down the road, which is what
Yeah.
what's been happening around here for the last hundred years.
This isn't gonna happen this fall.
We've been pushing Cedar Johnson Road off for
Twenty-six years.
A lot of years. There's a lot of traffic on that road and it's gonna get worse.
I'm I'm not saying that we don't do that. I'm just saying if we have the opportunity to do this to not do it until we can do a bigger chunk, what if the bigger chunk never comes? Then we've lost the opportunity to at least do this.
I agree.
I'm I'm saying we need to expedite Cedar Johnson Road and get it done within the next five years.
We're on track for that, though. We could be on track for that. This would be a good start. You know, there's a couple hundred yards there that.
But if if we could get an agreement with Cedar with Johnson County to help have them help pay for the Johnson County side along with this.
I think that's asking a lot. If we get them to agree to pay for half of a hundred yards, that's that's a victory.
Well, we're making paper that are half when we do Cedar Johnson Road. That's their road.
I think there's a good argument for that, honestly. I think there's a good argument for that.
Maintain and replace it. My issue. Let's see how this goes. Let's let's get this done and see how that goes if.
So I wonder what reality that they did share with us is that unless we did the free version without turn lanes, and even if we did that, it'd probably be hard for them to get to it this year the way that the bidding process.
Not gonna happen this fall.
Right.
It's this is.
But we might be into next year anyway.
That's my question is if we agree not to annex it, are they gonna let us pay over three years or is that just gone?
No, that's that was in in exchange for doing that.
That might have to be in the agreement.
So what she said is she will she'd be willing to talk about it again. I guess the the board supervisor said no before, but they didn't consider this. So she said, well, we will revisit it and and it's still being worked in there legally. So my thing is, yeah, let's go ahead and make that adjustment in there and get it back in front of them. And it'd be nice to so we know when that meeting is so that we can have a little contingent there to go and because I don't even think she understood the Cedar Johnson dynamic. dynamic either. And you know, hey, this is just the beginning of a partnership. Let's start it off on the right foot. Kinda what I was thinking, so.
Dave, would you have any comment on, on the Cedar Johnson Road improvement?
Driving on that roadway and seeing that we're going to have much more traffic coming out on that now that we have a connection from Meadows. It's definitely going to see some increased wear and tear. And if you go north, obviously of the entrance to Greenview, you can see that that has deteriorated to a point where it's falling apart now. So I would suspect that we're probably going to see some issues, especially as we get heavier construction traffic going in and out of there. Doing construction in that, that new phase, probably going to see some potholing forming, see areas where the base is not going to be able to support that traffic and and so forth. That typically what you see on those seal coat roadways.
And did, and did I get from our meeting the other day that you actually started working with Johnson County on Hoover Highway clear back in two thousand fourteen?
Two thousand fourteen, we did the traffic study. MPO did that and we had Johnson County participate. They, they picked up a good portion of that study and we shared the results with them. We've been back and forth for the last probably four or five years. I think two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we were trying to get a concept worked out for this and it wasn't until this past year that they got to the point where they gave us these options.
So in thinking that we would probably have that same kind of timeline on Cedar Johnson Road.
Right. And that was discussed at that meeting that given the time it took to get this to a point where we finally got concepts, we, we need to get started on Cedar Johnson Road. So that once we decide that needs to be done, we're not going through this same last minute, trying to figure out how to make it work scenario.
Well, I'm kind of seeing that this Exhibit Five might be our leading contender now. Just don't know, any idea how much it's gonna cost us however.
Exhibit Five is a hundred.
That's what's on the screen right there.
Exhibit Five doesn't have a turn lane.
Does.
That's two hundred and ninety.
That's Exhibit Five right there.
Yeah, no, it's not.
There's two, there's a turn lane on each.
Turn lane on that drawing. Exhibit Five is right in the packet with turn lanes. That's not.
It would cost us two hundred and ninety-three for that one.
I was gonna say, might.
Well, that's the old estimate.
This is Exhibit Five and that, I don't even know what the hell that is.
Eight forty-one.
It says, uh.
I don't have a turn lane.
Oh, it is Exhibit Five, but it has, there's one with and one without.
Traditional is without. That just went by. Right there. No, that's one.
How up to date are those numbers, Dave?
There you go.
I think they're all.
October twenty twenty.
Yeah, it looked like ten fifteen twenty twenty is what's listed and we've asked for an update based on what they feel needs to be done for earthwork for this turn lane option. I haven't received those numbers yet.
Does anyone disagree with me that Exhibit Five might be our leading contender now?
I need to figure out which one it is.
Dave, put your version of Exhibit Five up there, would you?
Well, he's gotta, he's gotta tell me which one, what page is on it.
Forty-five.
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 Dave, are, are we gonna be on the hook for some of this design of the roundabout? If we, if we decide to go a different route?
Well, I would think that the engineering would be less to do this turn lane option that we're looking at. And I don't know that how far along they've got with the roundabout. You know, they did some, some preliminary to figure out the earthwork. But I would suspect that the cost they gave us previously for engineering should cover what's remaining, even if we go to this turn lane option. I haven't worked that out with Neil yet, but I feel that they do have some responsibility in trying to hold the budget on the engineering, given that there was a decision that was made based off of the preliminary estimates that were provided to us. And they were off considerably. So that's, that's been, the groundwork for that discussion has been laid already.
Well, in addition to the cost of this work, we're also on the hook for half of the engineering and half of the at construction administration. Is that correct, Dave?
That was the original, that was the original proposal. So what I discussed was that they should be proportional to the cost of the improvements on the west and east side. So the, the county has significantly more work on the west side, given the length of the transition from where they left off. The cities would only be about thirty percent to thirty-five percent in this option. So that, that was part of that agreement was that it would be proportional to the amount of work that was involved in the project, not split down the middle.
Okay. And we are also on the hook for property on our side of the county, property acquisition.
That's correct.
As well as your cost, whatever your cost is, we're on the hook for that also, in addition to the construction.
And I've, I've tried to stay out of this as much as I can, Roger, so.
I'm just, those things always are out there. So can we direct the county tomorrow then, if everyone's in agreement to pursue Exhibit Five?
I'm not gonna agree to anything.
You're not going to, I am sorry.
Because here's the deal. If they're saying, hey, we'll do this regular intersection for free or we do turn lanes. And they come in with turn lanes and say it's a hundred thousand dollars more, and then they come in and say the traffic circle is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars more. I'm gonna shy away from the traffic circle for twenty-five grand. Because to just swallow something because we're gonna save a little bit of money compared to doing it right. That's swallow something as small as twenty-five thousand dollars. Just so we can save a little bit of it.
And I'm.
Be amiable to it.
And I wanna add a little more to that because if we go back and Dave talks to the traffic study people and they don't say that we really need the turn lanes, how is Johnson County gonna interpret that we're making them put in turn lanes when they don't really need it? And if that's the case, then then option seven is only like a hundred, hundred and, yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us. So, you know, and it still gets that much done on Cedar John, they're still going up Cedar Johnson that much, you know, so.
I'm just trying to clarify what we're gonna tell them. We needed something solid that we're gonna tell.
They need to give us something solid from their end. I, I understand what's going on, but I mean.
From their end, they're not gonna do any more of the engineering until we give them a direction.
Yeah, but if, yeah, they're waiting on a study that warrants that does or doesn't need a turn lane. What's gonna happen when we say, hey, we want a turn lane? Like Colton said, they come back and say, well, it doesn't warrant a turn lane. You now own seventy percent of this project.
Right. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, I mean, how, how can you come out, how can you come out with what ifs? And then all of a sudden just pull, I mean, they've already pulled the rug once. Why wouldn't they do it again?
And from what I understand.
And I guarantee you they won't sign it because they know that it might not warrant it.
And, and Dave, you can, you can make sure I'm right on this, but if it's not the free option without the turn lanes, they're not gonna be able to move on it this year anyway. So that's going to give us more time to find out what we exactly, what we really want. Is that right? Is that what you came up?
That's my understanding is that they wouldn't be able to work it in, even if they tried, so. And, and Nick, Nick, to address your comments, they had given us these options previously at these costs, even before they thought that the new warrants were in place for the turn lanes. So I don't know that they could go back at this point and say that they're not going to put in the turn lanes if that's the option we selected. Cause they, they proposed that they would do this at those cost shares.
They also said we could pay him back in a three-year window.
The supervisors didn't say that yet. That was.
That was stat, their stat.
I know, but.
But they're legal and everybody worked it up.
That's what I mean.
And they've done it with other cities. We had a convention that West Branch is in Johnson County.
From what I got from your email today, Dave, are, are you feeling that with the new regulations that we're probably more than likely gonna have to have that turn lane?
That's the way that we interpret that. And I was asking MPO to take a look at that and see if they came to the same conclusion.
Cause I was hoping with the cutting down of the hill, making the site distance a lot better, that turning lane may not be required.
Which is Exhibit Seven.
Alright.
Which is fine with me if it's not required or it's not required. Otherwise, that seems like the absolute cheapest version while the no-cost version.
Or the hundred and fifty thousand dollar version.
Which version is that?
Seven.
Seven.
I don't like the seven now.
That's what I like. We can get by without the turn lane. That's what I like.
If both site distances are fine.
I mean, and if you look, they're, they're going up Cedar Johnson quite a bit.
Yeah, look what we get, you know, yeah. About four hundred feet east, four hundred feet north.
That's, it's not bad for a hundred and some thousand dollars.
So what I'm understanding now, Dave, is Version Seven might be our favorite unless a turn lane is warranted. I mean, if the turn lane has to be, then Version Seven's out the window. Then we're probably back to Version Five.
Five and seven.
Except there's a turn lane on Exhibit Five. They are the same except Five has a turn lane. Both directions. And a lot more pavement to the east. So can we take that to the engineers tomorrow, Dave? And I don't know if the sense of urgency is still there now or we're not doing it this fall.
I think with the need to determine whether or not the turn lanes are required, that's probably going to push them back a couple of weeks. That gives us another opportunity if they can provide better numbers on all options to determine whether the left turn lane option, if it's required, is significantly different in cost from the roundabout.
That would help us a lot.
Yeah, and have some better numbers to make a decision. So I can go back to them with that.
In other words, if we're required to have a turn lane.
Required.
We're required and we're gonna, we're gonna be paying whatever it costs.
We are. It's still cheaper than the roundabout. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Turn lane up Cedar Johnson team in. On our side.
A turn lane?
Yeah.
No.
You're gonna do a turn lane onto the dirt road?
Yep.
That's about one of the dumbest things you've ever heard.
That's what's warranted. If there's a left turn lane on one side, you gotta have the.
People that go there.
You gotta have that additional pavement width on the other side of the intersection. Whether there's a turn lane there or not. What else do we need to know? Um.
No, 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 no. You can make it, both, you can have turn lanes coming from each direction and both of them are turn lanes for Cedar Johnson Road going.
Yeah, that, that would make.
Going, it's a left turn lane.
Going north. So when you're coming east, there'll be a center turn lane. There'll be a center turn lane for turning on. And when you're going west, it would be a left-hand turn lane. You, you're not gonna have a turn lane for that gravel road. That's ignorant.
That's what I said. That's what I'm saying. That's gonna be one of the dumbest things I've ever heard if that's the case, that they're gonna require us to do.
You gotta have the, with the pavement width on one side has to match the pavement width on the other side.
That's fine, but it doesn't have to be a turn.
No, it doesn't have to be a turn. It doesn't have to be marked out as a turn.
It'd be a center turn lane on the other, on the one side.
The road's gonna be same width.
Right.
So the, the through traffic lane has to be aligned. So as you're going westbound, you don't wanna have to make a sudden jog through the intersection. You wanna keep that pavement on the north side in a straight line. So you have a dead space between the nor, north side and the south side that you could just stripe off and have a lot shorter. So we could shorten up that east side, but we wouldn't have a center turn lane because that turn lane wouldn't turn right. To go to Cedar Johnson Road, it would just be a striped area that allows transition from the left turn lane pavement back to the east side of the intersection.
Is there anything else we need to chat about on this?
I only have one other thing that I'm curious about, but it kinda ties in with the maybe Number Five too. I don't know. So if this town's going to grow, where do we propose it grows? And, and do we really wanna sign off the ability to, to not grow east with west?
We wouldn't be signing off.
I will not, I will not vote to do that. I will not vote that we do not annex in across from the Meadows.
You vote that we.
In ten years. I'll, I'll guarantee we're that we start looking over there in ten years, within ten years.
It's a developer.
If not five years.
Oh, no, but still.
Or next year.
But the proposal, but what's the proposal is that Johnson County would pay for, we could. Johnson County would pay for it now. And if we did annex it in, in say five years, then we would just pick up the last five years.
Ten percent per year.
So we'd be picking up fifty percent of that cost, not.
Yeah, if, if the whole thing costs a hundred thousand dollars, they would want half of that, ten percent per year of that back. If, if it gets annexed in five years. We could make the developer pay for that.
We could put it in a ten area and then we could take their money to pay.
Yeah, just keep throwing it all on the developer. They, they make lots of money.
Well, developers often pay for the roads. I mean. Okay.
I have many big questions. Seven look, sounds better than.
Seven what?
Realistically think that that's gonna be annexed into the city and become next housing development. Do you really need traffic circle or turn lanes? It's not gonna be forty-five anymore. I guarantee you that if that turns into a neighborhood. You're gonna need a big old traffic circle right in the middle of the neighborhood for twenty miles an hour.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking.
We're all over the place.
I think it's. Yeah, stupid all over the place. Just makes sense.
I have something for us all to think about.
Trying not to kill people.
Going back to the annexation part, that if we don't improve Cedar Johnson Road in the next five years, I guarantee you there won't be a developer that's gonna want to develop on that side of the road till that road is done because that road gets improved while he's trying to do a development he can't get to, he's not gonna be very happy. So if it takes us five years or ten years to do Cedar Johnson Road, there's no developer gonna want any of that ground over there.
It's gonna take at least five years.
Yeah, so. Another thing to think about. What I was gonna ask, Redmond, is there, has there been any thought on how, what the possibilities of paying for Cedar Johnson Road improvement? I mean, have we, have we looked into that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we have. It's, there's no, there's no easy, there's no easy pictures. What we're hoping to do is get rid of, retire some of our debt service so that we can take on the next. Cause as, as I expressed to, to Roger, this is like a Cubby Park. Basically, it's going to be right around the same ballpark on either we're gonna have the bond and our, our debt capacity is gonna, gonna shoot up. So the more we can get off of our rolls, the better. And we, we looked at, I think it was, I think it was twenty-six when that really starts happening in a substantial way. Now, there's other things that we've done that will help us. I, I. Now, there's other things that we've done that will help us. I, I think the capital improvement levy is a big step forward. That's gonna continue to grow. We've been getting some good numbers about the recovery, American Recovery Act we hear that we're going to be getting somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars. I've kind of been looking at, you know, getting those east side projects off on a good start with that money. Uh, but that could help. Uh, we just got some news that road use tax dollars are gonna be, um, better than expected, maybe by thirty-five thousand or so. So I mean, there's no, there's no magic silver bullet or magic bullet, but if we start kind of piecing things together and planning right, I think we can make it happen. Uh, but it's not overnight. So I think, I think five years is probably pretty fair and aggressive number to try and get ready for in five years.
Well, it's gonna help if we make Johnson County pay for their half. I mean, that ought to make it a whole lot easier right off the bat.
Yeah, right.
Definitely. It gives us that time to start negotiating and having conversations with them a little bit more constructive than our last one, which wasn't bad. But I think they have some misconceptions about this, so.
Okay, Dave, have you got a direction of what to, or is it up to you to communicate with the engineers then? Or do we communicate with, we communicate with somebody?
I can email Neil and let him know that we would like to get some more information from them and also get some feedback from MPO on the need for turn lanes.
Okay.
Gordon, do you have any idea where this kind of money would come from?
I would guess a lot of it would have to be borrowed. That's my guess. You're talking millions of dollars for Cedar Johnson Road.
No, I'm talking the roundabout, or the, not the roundabout, but the intersection.
Well, that, you might be able to use a little bit of road use tax money.
But we're using that over on the east side, remember? Everybody forgets the east side, well, the project we got going on over there. All of it?
Pretty much.
This is tiffable too. This intersection is.
Problem is we don't even know what it's gonna cost yet. Come back and tell us it's worth a lot more.
Cedar Johnson is tiffable. Main Street's tiffable.
Kevin, Kevin put all that in.
I'm not saying I propose that right away, but it, it is an avenue. Alright, Dave, we should probably move on. Unless there's any other profound discussion on this. I, I'm assuming the roundabout's dead. Any, any disagreement with that?
Must the state revolving loan. Tell us what our water rates have to be to pay that.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on, item five. Annexation to our municipal code. What do, what do you want to do, Redmond? What do we talk about?
So, um, pretty much a good segue from our last conversation, start kind of thinking about where we're going to be growing at and having some kind of idea of how we want to handle that growth, uh, when those opportunities come up. So looking at our current code, and we really don't have anything talking about annexation in our code. Maybe there was a policy, a directive or something somewhere, um, it's some resolution somewhere, but it never translated into the ordinance. So, um, I think we should consider, um, having some kind of guiding principles on our annexation. And there's really three basic, um, forms of, of annexation. Uh, obviously, voluntary annexation. Uh, that's, uh, someone who wants to annex into the city. Uh, that there's eighty-twenty, which is if you're, say, annexing an area and eighty percent of that area, the residents, the landowners in that area want to annex and twenty percent doesn't, doesn't. Uh, that twenty percent can be forced to annex. Um, and then involuntary annexation, usually driven by government entity. Um, and reflects a lot like a eminent domain situation where they're forced to annex into the community. So there's policies, um, that we can look at, uh, not only to identify how we would engage those different types, but, um, what areas we should be looking at or thinking at. It really wasn't in our comprehensive plan as, as good as that was put together. We hadn't really planned that out. Um, and then it's also, um, important to know that there's a state city development board that has to approve any annexation. So, uh, we have to have a process to engage them. There's timelines and administrative processes with that. And that's before the council gets to make this decision on, on those type of things. So I gave you a bunch of information, kind of started looking through that and get some thoughts on, um, areas of where we think growth is. I know we have, um, had at least a couple of inquiries, maybe several, uh, behind McDonald's. Um, so I know that's an area that's been at least eyeballed by, by, uh, private developers. Um, we talked about, um, obviously, uh, Cedar Johnson. It might be awesome opportunities on the east side of town. Then think about what happens on the end of fifth or six. So. Thoughts? Just kind of get the, the brain going on this and you can start homing in on some policies that we can bring forward after hearing some more of council's thoughts.
I don't know why we would involuntarily annex someone.
Well.
Why would we do that? I mean, aren't we kind of involuntarily?
For a sewer plant or?
Allow us to. Several, several reasons.
Well, like, for one thing, like, I, I know that the people that own that, the land behind McDonald's, not the, not the, uh.
The Rumbles.
Rumbles. They would, they would like the, would make their land more valuable if it was in the city. And they're trying to sell it. So they would, they would like for us to annex. This was, but we, you know, this was top back and up. The, the one thing that's, and there was been enough talk with those businesses back there that might not have been quite, it was eighty-twenty because the Rumbles had eighty percent of the property all by themselves. So even if nobody else agreed, they, they were, it was okay. But where the struggle was, was that if you're forced all those other people, what are we gonna give them? We gotta give them something, you know? And so we talked about doing streets, paving the road.
Right.
Well, geez, that's a lot of money. Where are we gonna get that?
At that time, it was a million dollars.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, a million dollars to get to the end of the property so the Rumbles could sell their property.
Right.
That was a lot of money.
Yeah, two hundred yards of, or would that come north also?
It'd go north also. Cause we were annexed all, you gotta give all of the people.
We can't have a dollar real, so we have to pay.
Right.
Why would they voluntarily want to annex when their property type is gonna go up?
I mean, some of them were okay with it. I mean, some of the businesses were still okay with it, but, you know. There were a couple of them that wasn't, weren't gonna go. Well, was it, was, I mean, like, Rumbles had over eighty percent of the area anyway, so.
We've annexed property before voluntarily. Um, but there's no policy on, there's no procedure?
We always, he's, what he listed was the state person, the state, that's what we just always went by.
We know there was a procedure, notifications and.
Yeah, the state, uh, if you did it, it had to go through the state. So that, that, you probably did that. But, you know, there's still, um, maybe having a plan, like you, you say, well, we, we want to reach an agreement with Johnson County, but seven years is too long or just right, or fifteen years is too long. You know, if we have a little, cause one of the things that the commissioner was asking, the supervisor was asking is, what's our intentions? Well, we don't really have a plan, so really can't say, but we think we can work with you. It'd be a little bit clearer and concise if we actually know exactly what we, how we wanted to proceed about our future development. So I know those areas, uh, but even like you mentioned, the sewer plant, we're real, we're fine where it is and how it says there's enough land there. Uh, but, um, expanding, growing, there, there's, there's some areas there that are not within the city, across the road. I don't know if it's right across the road, it's within the city or not. So there's, there's reasons and thoughts that we should be thinking about. So we can have a plan, annexation plan, we can have an annexation policy. And, um, obviously the policy needs to include the state laws. So I think I gave an example of state solar. Which is, I think solar was one of the reasons why Johnson County so anxious about investing in something and having an annex right after investing in it. But, um, the example there, uh, eighty-twenty example from Adele. And I think another solar of the involuntary one. Those are some things that kind of whet the whistle.
Is this a policy that like, it was like a plan as in like, well, we want to annex next?
No, these are just, these are just policies, these are plans. I, I can get, I don't have a copy of a plan in there. But I can, I can, I can get to, essentially it's gonna be much like our urban renewal, um, map, where we, where we, at where we think our future annexation opportunities are going to be. What if we, if any, there are gonna be opportunities for TIF or?
Why it's gotta be so complicated?
Some kind of growth.
State law. Is this something you and John Fuller could get together on and come up with a?
We can, or you want to be like first come, first served? Do you want to just take it as it comes? Or do you want to have some kind of ideas on, kind of like a comprehensive plan?
Living in this community all my life, this town has always been surrounded by farmers who don't like to give up their land. And the only time land gets given up in this town is when somebody passes away. That's what's happened with, um, metals, well, it was, before it was a metal. Like Furman ended up buying a chunk which was a Sager farm. That was farmed for years until he passed away, then it became available. Same way with the ground on the west side of Cedar Johnson Road. Farmed ground, unless the price was really astronomical, he's probably not gonna sell. We got ground on the east side, the same way. If somebody wants to develop over there, price is right, go at it. So we've got ground around, but usually it doesn't, farmers don't like to give up their ground.
For the most part, we're landlocked.
We were landlocked. That's why we were landlocked for twenty years. Nobody, nobody passed away and we sat here stagnant for twenty years. Nothing happened because there wasn't ground available. We got ground to the north, north of Cargill that could be, could be developed. So we got ground all around us. It's just, who knows what'll become available.
It almost goes any direction in the town.
So, but that.
Even, uh, the Jensen farm, which is north of, uh, Cubby Park. That's a possibility to become available. The Freeze farm that's north of Cedar's Edge Golf Course, that could possibly become available. I mean, there's, there's possibilities all around. It's just nobody knows when they're gonna happen.
The other side of Alford Street, across the street.
Six streets, I mean, six streets could be extended.
Well, that, you're almost making a, making a move that we should do something on the, on the other side of McDonald's then while the, while we have the opportunity.
We want more commercial ground. We've got a chunk of.
More, more.
We got a chunk of commercial ground sitting on the corner that for some reason we can't get rid of. P and G property.
Usually annexations occur when a developer or a buyer really, you know, finds it and they want an annex. It's rarely does a city push for annexation. I guess Corville and North Liberty were duking out some property for a while.
Well.
They did, they did. Cedar Johnson Road, put in forty houses, we had to annex. You guarantee I'd be sitting here right now, meaning pushing to annex that.
Yeah, sure I would. Exactly. I would.
But I feel like a plan is a little far fetched. I mean, unless supervisor for Johnson County got across the ball and can tell us that where we're gonna grow, then sure, we'll give her an annexation plan. And that's a little ridiculous, but I mean, having a policy might not be a bad idea. At least it sets some framework, but. Anexation plan, we could just draw a circle around West Branch twenty, twenty miles out and say, okay, here we go. This is what we're looking at.
It's not a land use plan.
We don't even have a plan on how we're gonna pay you. What do you mean?
Okay, Redmond, I don't know where, where to go with this. I really don't.
Yeah, I don't think a policy would be the end of the world, but from what it sounds like to me is I think situation calls for what one of these.
It's situational.
Calls for which one of these you pick.
Opportunity arises, yeah.
I, I just think we need to, if, if we don't have a policy of how, we've been, we've been annexed, we've done annexations before, it didn't seem that difficult.
When, when was that talk?
Big Prohibition.
Big Prohibition was our last, maybe our last annexation. It was, went pretty smoothly. The owner asked to be annexed. That probably would have been P and G, the Rumbles, that would have been, that would have been annexed. P and G to the south.
Yeah.
That may have been another one, yes. And that was pretty simple. The, the owner, it was owner driven.
Yep.
Owner driven.
Twenty years ago.
That was thirty-five years ago. No, twenty, twenty years.
Fifty, twenty-five years ago.
So it was all owner driven, really was. And it, it just worked. I don't know what, how they notified. They did everything they had to do.
Like you said, we.
Yeah, involuntaries are the easiest. But like, uh, phone said, do, but you know, eighty-twenty out there, definitely gonna have a framework for that.
Okay, well, I guess.
So I could look at a policy and so much of plan, it doesn't look like there's too many areas we're looking at except for maybe, uh, Cedar Johnson and, um, McDonald's Rumbles. That's pretty much.
Like I said, realistically, you can go any direction out of town.
Yeah, we could look at any area.
There's a chance if somebody comes and offers the right amount of money.
We're not gonna drive it though, are we?
No.
We're not gonna.
I guarantee you, if Norm Bifford finds a developer that wants to develop his forty acres northwest of town, that's the next place we're going.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you won't have a road to get to it.
I mean, you go out by the, you go between office and dog park.
Yeah, well.
If I go, if I go talk to that farmer and offer him the right amount of money, I guarantee I could start developing that next, next year, but.
Just remind me, I think the dog park is, well, I hope the city should annex, but it's not actually in the city.
I mean, there's just so much open land.
I think, um, a framework in general, how to handle those situations.
I think we annexed the cemetery. Cemetery was not in city limits a couple of years ago.
So.
It is now.
Like Iowa.
Nobody complained.
Like Iowa City has a policy, this might be something we look at. Iowa City has a policy about annexation that you can't landlock something that's not in the city. So if you annex.
Can't do that.
All the property around.
Can't create a zone of hole.
Right. So like if we, if we annexed the dog park, we're, we're already starting to build our circumference. We, we could just go around and start annexing little farms till we, till we surround one of them big farms and then say, huh, this is what.
It's eighty, eighty-twenty. Okay, let's move on. We got a couple other things to chat about yet. Um, city administrator report, Redmond.
Okay, um, so we, we closed on the, um, state revolving loan fund for our planning and, and, uh, design. So I, I just talked to our, um, Von. So I, I just talked to our, uh, bond counsel and, um, we're about ready to, um, start setting up our, um, uh, uh, drawdowns. So we'll, we'll have a, a, a real quick meeting with, um, state revolving fund folks and just to check on, uh, how they want that to happen. And we can start that, so, uh, we can start paying some bills there. Uh, we talked about the round about enough. Wopsey Creek, um, uh, I know, uh, Dave's been working, uh, with Gaskills on that. Uh, the memo, uh, the MOU hasn't really took off with them. Uh, so I'm, I talked to, uh, Kevin about the, their, their lack of wanting to engage in that process. And, uh, Kevin had shared that he wanted to continue to move on, uh, with the next stages of, uh, the eminent domain process so that that stays on track. And, uh, I kind of tend to agree with him on that. Um.
Let me expedite it.
That part I don't know, but there's some, there's some logical next steps that need to keep on going for.
Give them enough time.
Do we have a, do we have a start date for that project?
No, I don't, but we.
It was an ending date you wanted, not the third day, ending date.
I, I just saw a date.
Something, yeah, I understand.
That's what I was asking about, expedition, give them enough time.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I said from the beginning, they were going to dance around this. What have they done?
We had the Zoom meeting with them in August.
Yep.
I mean, it's like anything else a city's ever done with them goes nowhere. I mean, they just keep extending the stick.
Yep. What else, Redmond?
Yeah, that's pretty much, uh, either, there's a quick update there on Greenview, things are moving on there, as you know. And then, um, with the Parkview, uh, you know, we've had some, uh, discussions about stormwater issues there. Uh, they apparently are, are going to go around the Gaskill property and they, um, have some, um, strategies there that I think is all set in stone. So I'm looking to confirm those with them. Um, and I think that's, uh, pretty much it. I'll be, uh, in training, uh, Thursday and Friday this week. And I'll be working on closing out the, uh, food pantry grant. And then after that, we got to start looking for, uh, replacement for our finance officer. Be busy days ahead.
When can we start advertising this?
Oh, probably, um, next month.
Like in two weeks or less?
Yeah. Yeah.
You can't let it drag on.
So.
No, we probably want to get someone in that we can overlap on some of the time before we leave.
Right.
So next meeting, you probably should bring us a job description that we can, okay?
Um, so we do some interviews, would anybody like to sit in on those interviews? Anybody? It'll be Leslie, Redmond, I imagine myself. Um, I'd love to have a council person there.
Depending on when they are.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, you want to tell me they're five o'clock at night, then yeah.
Someone with a current job, which I kind of hope they have a job. Um, it'll be in the evening.
Vacation days.
So I'll be calling somebody, Colton sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Redmond?
Nope.
Okay, Kevin Olson's out. Staff, Matt, uh, Matt Goodell, I have a question.
Sure.
The pavement in front of the post office, we going to do something with that this summer or not? Washboarding.
The asphalt? It, it's not in the budget to do it, I mean, it, if it's something you guys want to do, we can. We can do it, but we had a price of twenty-seven thousand dollars to do it last time we looked at it. That was two, three years ago when we did the sidewalks there, we had that in there and it was decided not to do it at that time.
It's just starting to bother me, I'll.
Yeah.
I'll let it go for a while longer.
But you don't notice cats.
No, I break an axle on my truck every time I come to stop there. I go around it or I go one side or the other of the.
Have we made a decision on who's going to do our Tipton seal this year?
Tipton seal, we got a decision, Matt? That was just.
No, I thought it was just bring them out and see.
Yeah, you were gonna.
Okay, no, we haven't, we haven't had them out yet.
He was going to get them both out, quote, for both of them, I thought.
Is there anything we can do with that chunk of, uh, Cedar Johnson Road north of Greenview?
Yeah, he's going to do it.
No, I mean, like throw some.
In the meantime, we could throw cold patch in it.
That'd be awesome, because the craters are getting almost.
Yeah.
The hole in my truck.
Yeah, it's not great.
Okay.
I can't talk to them anymore, we got to drive through two or three of them, we go around one.
Anything else from staff? You read none, council people? If anybody doesn't anything, I do a couple of things. Um.
The water, the wall looks nice.
I gotta let it warm up now so I can paint it. It's going to be below fifty. A week. So I'm almost done with a little red building.
What's getting that?
Um. It, it, there's a, I got to bring this up delicately. Hypothetically, if a company wants to build a forty-eight unit independent living facility on Cedar Johnson Road. Property from KLM, would we support? Um, uh, TIF. Uh, tax rebate. Would we support a TIF tax rebate on a eight million dollar project? Much rebate. Um, not more than seventy percent. And not over. Seven to ten years, absolute math. No tax rebate.
I'm a five-year man.
What kind of housing unit?
Over fifty-five.
Independent, living, over fifty-five, um.
You said moderate to low income too.
Somewhat subsidized, is there, is possibly, we're being looked at.
Place across from the Ford.
No, this would be a three-story.
Isn't that fifty-five and older?
Yeah, it'd be like that, it'd just be bigger scale.
Be like that.
Very huge.
Yeah.
We're being looked at, is what I'm saying. I've also told Tipton's in the running. Um, and the realtor said a ten-year TIF would be more favorable. At a minimum, would we?
What was going up on, I thought something was going up nine D P.
That may be happening too, or just whoever gets there first gets there, that's, they could both happen. We need it, I mean, we really do. I don't know where I'm going to go in twenty years.
Just stay in my house.
At a minimum, would we consider, um. If, um, this company wants to apply for state financial aid through the state. It would help their case if, if we gave a, a letter memorandum of understanding, say, of, that we would support a TIF. Guess we could leave any terms out of it. We could leave terms out of it, but. Um, it's, it's just in the preliminary, very preliminary, we're being looked at, that's all I can say. Yea or nay, anybody? This is what TIF is for, to, to, I mean, it's a subsidy, I know.
I'd support some, some type of TIF.
I would too.
Okay, so, uh. Need one more.
I told you I'd support it.
I, I talked to Colton privately, he's, he's kind, he's. The terms are questionable so far.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I guess, I guess the way I kind of look at this, this is that when, when you're community, when you're, uh, competing with other communities to get an eight million dollar investment into your community, you're going to have to probably give up something because the other community is going to do the same thing. They're, they're going to try to give, they're, just like industrial park, we, we give subsidies to try to bring them to town.
That's why we got Procter and Gamble in North Liberty. But, but we have, we have other, we have something that, that Tipton doesn't have. We don't have to give that away, is we have a close proximity to Iowa City.
But Tipton has an entity that you don't have to leave. And their industrial park is a lot bigger than our industrial park.
Boy, if this wasn't on television, I could say so.
They have a lot more restaurants in their town, they have. They have a lot more, you don't have to leave that community.
It's.
They got a Dollar General.
Yeah.
They got a Dollar General.
And Walmart! You know, hard words don't work.
You can have and support those things, you're a half hour away from.
Yeah, when you're out in the middle of nowhere.
Forty-five minutes away from Iowa City. That can be a high V in the mall, fifteen minutes.
They got a great grocery store. I mean, you live in that community as long as you work.
So which city council are you on?
That was an orange.
I'm just, I'm talking about the.
I mean, I get it. That's all I need to know.
Competition between communities.
No, I was just going to ask, it's just, they want to put it on the corner and it's going to be subsidized?
Yeah.
Not a fan. You realize what's across the street? Crapless if you're over fifty-five, but subsidized doesn't always mean that. You're going to get the.
This company.
Type of individual, just because they're over fifty-five, doesn't mean you necessarily want them across the street.
Facility in Johnson County, I'm told, and maybe it's Pope County already.
I get that, but I'm just saying.
They got them all over.
Nothing against subsidized, but can be.
Well.
Sort of not the most delicate, throw across from a high school and middle school.
Once again, that's the game you play. That's how you get financing, you subsidize.
Just said it was low income, didn't say it was a reform center for old folks, geez.
Doesn't.
There's lots of people that can afford to go to old folks home.
I know, I get it, but I'm just saying, when you throw that element in, things can change a little bit.
We're talking twelve hundred dollars a month rent, reduce down to five or six hundred dollars for one or two better units.
Okay, one of that.
That's the subsidy. Hypothetically. All right, anybody else? We got to get on the personal, the salary plan too, we got to get that adopted. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
No, or, or what Tom came up with?
Merit.
Or merit pay, no, is that what it is, what do we call it?
Yeah.
Step and groove.
Yeah, it's merit based.
We got to get on that because if we delay it, it's going to be a problem.
It's almost budget time again.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I got, anybody else with anything? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Colton, Jerry seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.